And good morning. Welcome to City Hall on a brisk Saturday morning. By brisk, I mean terribly cold. We're going to begin with our pledge to the flag. I'll ask Councilwoman Fuller to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Let the records reflect that all council members are present and accounted for this morning. I'm going to begin just by sharing a little bit about what we're doing today. We have two topics that I felt needed more discussion than what we could do on a typical Wednesday night. Those topics being the American Rescue Plan Act or ARPA funding that we have started to receive from the federal government through the state. The plan today is to get an idea of what staff recommends, and then we will go about our ways and think about those, come up with any other ideas, and they'll be voted on at a later date. Following that, we're going to be talking about our community village ordinance, something I believe needs to be amended to better reflect what we want in these developments and something we're actually willing to enforce with these developments. No decisions will be made today by the council. This is simply discussion. As a result, council is free to discuss at length. There will not be an opportunity for public comment because this is the first time council has had a chance. So we're going to give them the crack, and then at a later date in a workshop meeting, the public will have an opportunity to provide their comments as well. So with that, we're going to begin discussing ARPA funds. Who would like to start with that from staff?
Well, I think I'm going to take the lead on this one, and Barry's going to jump in when I stumble if there are questions I can't handle. So, let's see. So in March 2021, the American Rescue Plan Act was signed into law. It actually established two funds, the Coronavirus State Fiscal Recovery Fund and the Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Fund, which together make up, as it says on the slide, Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds, also known as the S L F R F. I have a crisp dollar bill for anybody who wants to say that acronym, but anyhow. So that's why we call it ARPA. So what we can use it for, to respond to COVID-19, health emergency things, or its economic impacts, to give premium pay to workers doing essential functions, first responders, police, some public works, utility workers. And we can also do it for provision of government services to the extent that there was the reduction of revenue due to COVID-19. They recently have relaxed that standard where we don't need to actually provide the -- we don't need to do the math to demonstrate that we would have had a reduction in revenue. That's a fairly recent change. And the other thing is to make necessary investments in water, sewer, or broadband infrastructure, and that's where we have decided that the money would be best spent for us. The treasuries come up with all kinds of guidelines, the interim, and recently, this past month, the final rule was released, and it gives us a framework for determining what -- if a project would be eligible or not under the program. And a lot of this kind of punts to the environmental protection agencies, drinking water and clean water state revolving funds. So there's a lot of reference to, and they do throw out these acronyms all the time, like DW, SRF, and it's a lot to follow. But so a lot of what does or doesn't qualify is driven by what's eligible under the EPA guidelines. So some of those things, now kind of going to what the EPA tells us, is we can spend money on things related to construction of publicly owned treatment works. So that would be stuff out of our treatment plant, the conveyance infrastructure, so our, you know, sewer lines, things like that, stormwater, any public-private nonprofit entity that manages or captures stormwater, drainage water, so that again is our storm sewer system. And energy efficiency, if we -- if the cost estimates for the projects that we're considering leave some funds available, we'd like to explore energy efficiency out at the wastewater treatment plant. We've talked a little bit about wind energy and solar, and at this point, it looks like solar is the more viable option. But that's more a nice-to-have if we have, depending upon what the costs come in for some of these other projects. So the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund, basically things to improve the water system, you know, reduce water loss, replace lead lines for entities that have those, that sort of thing. We can also rehabilitate wells and replace, if we had a contamination issue and we needed to replace a well because of that, we could use money for that. That doesn't apply to us currently. We've had situations like that, but we've simply taken those wells offline and are already, you know, have already recovered that capacity elsewhere. So costs have to be incurred by March 3, 2021, ending -- so this actually has been pushed back a bit. Now we have until the end of April, and I should have updated this slide, sorry. But let's see. So there are two, I guess, cost deadlines. One is to incur the cost, and I'm still looking into exactly what the criteria is for that. I believe it's going to be a signed contract because then the funds have to be expended by 2026. So we have a few years to do it, but when you consider the number of projects that we're going to have going on, it's going to be a lot for, you know, for the staff that we have to manage all of that, and also for our -- it's going to be a lot for our engineer to design. So we're still waiting on a lot of the reporting requirements. We've -- Barry and I have attended several webinars. Councilwoman Foster has also attended several with us, and they've really not focused much on the reporting thus far. I actually posed a question with the last one in advance and was sitting there feeling very frustrated that they hadn't answered my question yet. And at the very end, they kind of wrapped it up with, "And we're going to have another webinar on reporting next month." So we're still waiting for a lot of the details on reporting, but we know it's going to be quarterly, and we also expect that there's -- we're going to have to do a single audit when we do our annual audit because we're going to be expending federal funds in the coming year.
And more than $750,000.
Okay, right, thank you. So Barry had to work to get us a system for award management or SAM number at the federal There's some housekeeping stuff as far as record keeping, and generally, they're just the same accounting practices that we have in place already. A single audit, I just mentioned, and as Barry said, you know, we're going to very likely spend more than $750,000. So that's going to be an extra component for our annual audit next year. Silver Rice compliance, you know, we just need to meet the federal guidelines for spending federal money in a non-discriminatory way. So this is what we expect to be in our first report that's going to be at the end of April or due by the end of April, but again, we're still waiting on the final reporting requirements. But we're going to have to give them basically information about our expenditures. Once we've approved our project list, we'll have to give updates on the project status and spending on it, of course. And -- sorry, bumped the screen. Let's see. Okay. And some of the things in here that they're talking about for the reporting and the expenditures, economic and racial equity and equitable outcomes, we are such a small entity that those are not really driving factors for us, especially when you consider that we could be -- you could be spending money on different types of assistance programs rather than infrastructure. So with the infrastructure costs, I think, you know, those are really not the factors they might be if we were offering some kind of fiscal relief for like, you know, rent abatement or assistance for folks who have been adversely impacted by COVID. So with the infrastructure approach, that's kind of less of a worry. So just a couple more things, you know, as we get a little farther along, you know, dates and operations dates, locations of the projects will all be part of our reporting. And let's see, you know, just some more factors they expect to see. So we do have, for example, an NPDES permit out at our treatment plant. So if we're doing a project out there, which we really don't have any, most of them are all for the conveyance system, but just things that would be applicable for our reporting just so they can tie it all together at the federal level. So with that, I'd like to just kind of do a quick run-through of the projects that we think are the top-tier ones to spend this money on. So the first one is Antrim Boulevard Water Main Extension. Right now, the water main kind of dead ends by the mini storage facility there. So we want to continue that out to Trevannian Road so we have kind of more of a loop in the system. Currently, if we have an issue out there and we need to turn water off, we're turning off a lot of that commercial area around the roundabout, and this will also help maintain steady pressure. And when we do have an issue, it helps us isolate a smaller section of the water system without putting more people out of service when we have to do repairs. So, and that one is estimated at $409,000. The next one is Fairground Avenue Sewer Main Replacement. This is an old terracotta sewer line at -- I'm not going to bother with the manholes right now. That's not going to mean much for folks, but essentially, it's from Genevieve Drive to Fourth Street. And this one, we hope, as you know, we have a serious inflow and infiltration problem that a lot of, you know, rainwater, groundwater is getting into our sewer system and causing capacity issues at our treatment plant, and also, in some cases, overflows or backups, backups being the more common of the two. So if we can reduce our inflow and infiltration, which I'm just going to refer to as I and I going forward, we can reduce those flows to the plants and ultimately spend less money processing essentially rainwater. So a lot of these projects are going to target that. So this one's estimated right now at $606,000 because there's going to be pavement disruption and restoration involved also. Next up, we've talked about this one before, there's a storm drain in Riffle's Alley that runs behind houses on Fairview, and right now, it daylights just off of York Street. And the line is, it appears to be portions terracotta, portions black corrugated pipe, portions PVC pipe, and it's essentially collapsed in spaces. And we are right now working with property owners to get a right of entry to go in there, and we've got most of them lined up. So we will be moving forward with that, and that one's estimated at $60,000.
On that slide, you have this will reduce the chance of flooding conditions on Riffle Lane behind 18 Fairground Avenue. Should that be Fairview Drive?
Thank you, yes.
Okay.
Next one up is, this is our big one. This is Roberts Mill Road and Broad Street, essentially a reconstruction, kind of a mini streetscape. So we know that both water sewer and stormwater lines on Roberts Mill Road and Broad Street are in poor condition, and we actually have encountered during extreme rain events, manhole -- sewer manholes surcharging at the base of Broad Street. We've been applying for state funds, both grant or low-interest loans through the state revolving funds for several years for Roberts Mill Road. We have been -- some years, we have been awarded one component or another, or maybe two out of three components, but we've been shooting to get awards for all three, for both for all water, sewer, and stormwater in order to move the project forward. This past year, we decided the time was right. We had funds available in utility savings that we would be able to do this project without having to do the revolving funds or without grant money. But thanks to ARPA, we can use those funds for it. So this is our really big-ticket project, and we did decide to extend the Roberts Mill project to incorporate Broad Street as well because that's how essentially the sewer line flows. So the more inflow and infiltration or I and I that we can reduce along there, the less likely we are to have manhole surcharge issues when that flow gets down to Baltimore Street. So a lot of these sewer projects are not only aimed at reducing flows to the treatment plant, thereby recovering capacity at the plant and reducing costs, but also to keep us in permit compliance and to avoid things like overflows. So that's why we've given them such a high priority. And also, while we're on Roberts Mill Road, as I mentioned, we've been applying to MDE, the Department of the Environment, for funding for several years for this. Each year, we do an application. It's like a 10-page application that our engineer prepares, and we've been updating the project cost each year. So we've been inflating that each year that we've been applying. What we've done for a lot of these cost estimates, because we do have a relatively recent estimate through these funding applications, is we've calculated a price per linear foot for water, sewer, and stormwater based on these applications that CDM Smith, our engineer, prepared for us. So that's how we've derived a lot of these funding estimates, is a, you know, price per linear foot for water in a paved condition versus an unpaved condition. Same thing with sewer and stormwater. We have another project while I'm talking about how we've come up with some of the funding figures that we have currently awarded. We just awarded the bid for the Meadowbrook Sewer Interceptor Replacement. So with that, we have a price per linear foot for sewer replacement that's not in a paved area. So in some other sewer projects, you'll see in a minute, we've used that price because that's going to be more, you know, a better approximation for areas where we don't have to dig up a street. So enough on that one. Moving on, Tonnington Elementary School Sewer Main Replacement. There's a sewer line that runs between the Trevannian Terrace parcel where the stormwater pond is being constructed now and the backside of the elementary school, kind of follows the stream that runs through there. Again, that's an old terracotta sewer line, and it's right next to a stream, so we are projecting that there's a lot of inflow and infiltration through this line. So this one should be relatively simple, and this is one that we are going to be cleaning and televising to see how much of it can be relined versus dug up and replaced. So the figures on some of these sewer projects may change as we get the results of that cleaning and televising. If we find that we need to dig up and replace a larger portion, the cost may go up. If the line is overall in good shape without a lot of sags or collapsed areas, and we can simply reline it, the cost may go down a bit. And one nice thing about this project is there are no laterals coming off. There aren't any houses served directly from this line, so we should be able to, you know, do it more quickly, and we're hoping that -- we're hoping we'll be able to line most of it, but we don't know until the televising's done.
So when you came up with that figure, did you assign a percentage of anticipated relining versus replacing to come up with that, or is this based solely on relining the whole thing?
It's -- we used the estimates that we had from the Meadowbrook Interceptor. And surprisingly, at least to me, the cost between replacement per linear foot and lining is not as dramatic as I would have thought. And it's -- a lot of it has to do with the conditions of where the line is located and so on. So these are kind of preliminary numbers right now, but they're based on the best information we have.
Okay.
And this one, again, a little under $200,181,005. There's also a terracotta sewer line that runs through some backyards, basically from, well, it's from about 4 Frederick Street, runs behind 4 Frederick Street, and then parallels West Baltimore Street down to Memorial Park, crosses a bunch of backyards and the church parking lot by Grace United. So again, this is another terracotta line that we would like to replace or reline if we can, and this one's estimated at $376,000.
You mentioned it goes through backyards.
Yes.
Is it similar to Fairview in terms of our abilities to get to it, or do we have easements existing?
We have an easement on this one.
Great.
Next up, Westview Drive Water Main Replacement. We are averaging, I guess, at least one water break a year on Westview Drive, and apparently, back in the day, the city installed the line and did not have the equipment to get through rock and so on, so the line sort of zigzags back and forth across the road as you go down the road, depending upon what rock was hit when they installed it. So we want to replace that, and we do have a lot of water breaks out there. And the pipe is in very rough condition. So the -- this one is scheduled or estimated at being $1 million, $96,000 of ARPA funds, and then we would use highway user revenue for the paving portion that wouldn't be covered because we'd also like to do paving beyond just the trench that we dig. And I think that -- oh, one left here. Hang on. Okay. Last one, I think this is the last one, is the Windy Hills Pumping Station. This is out at the corner of, well, one house away from the intersection of Starboard Drive and Starboard Court in the Windy Hills area or Wheatfields area. And it's just an older pumping station, and it needs some upgrades to the control panel, and the pumps are about at the end of their functional life, so we'd like to replace them as a planned replacement before they fail. So this one is not as urgent because it is working, and we've made some incremental improvements over in recent years there. So if it turns out that we're, as we refine our cost estimates, if things are looking to be a bit more expensive than we expect, this might be one we push a few years down the road and just fund with utility savings rather than ARPA. So with that...
How much is that? The screen went dead.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, hm. That one is $40,180.
What was the name of the whole project again?
Windy Hills Pumping Station.
Thank you.
And these will all be in the capital improvement program that hopefully we will be able to refine those numbers to where we feel comfortable with them and have that before you next month. So the Roberts Mill Road-Broad Street estimate is giving us -- we're -- Kevin and I have been working on that and trying to come up with a good number, and that one has just been giving us some problems because of the varying lengths of the storm drains versus water versus sewer. And we just need to take some time and maybe go out in field and do some more measuring and get some more accurate linear footage distances. So far, a lot of this is based on mapping and aerial images and things like that, so I think we're going to end up going in the field, doing some actual field measuring to try to refine that cost because that project is the most expensive one and will eat up the, you know, the majority of, well, maybe not the majority, but probably over half of the ARPA money. So I'm not sure -- Dan, I'm not sure why our big monitors died, but that's the end of this PowerPoint, so.
Dan, you mentioned this last one, using some highway user?
On Westview, yes.
How much total for all of these, of the highway user fund, will we be using?
Okay. Let's see. I don't know if I've totaled that up. We've got 957 on this one.
I mean, we have more on Broadway.
And then we have more on Broad Street.
In highway user, right?
Yes, yes. We do have funds in highway user revenue to spend for paving. Let's see. And we're looking at about $1,091,000 for Roberts Mill and Broad Street. And Fairview, because we're not doing the whole street, the repaving portion would be -- so if we do a water or sewer project or stormwater, and we have to dig up a road as part of that project, we can use ARPA funds to restore the pavement there because it's part of a water sewer or stormwater project. What we can't use it for is just our general street paving. So using Roberts Mill Road and Broad Street as an example, we're digging up to replace three utilities in the road, so that's going to basically destroy about three-quarters of the road when we do that work. So we've apportioned 75% of the paving costs to ARPA and 25% to highway user revenue. So, but as I said, the pricing still needs to be refined a little bit. That's why I don't have a CIP to put on the table right now because we want to try to get those numbers as close as we can before we ask for approval on the capital improvement project -- program, rather. So, and the ARPA funds, the ARPA-funded projects will be part of that, and they're basically going to be the ones that we try to tackle in the next few years.
So what is, based on this proposed plan, what's the total ARPA money spent on these projects?
Just add it up, $6,651,745.
Okay.
If I say that one more time, I'm sorry.
Yeah, like I said, I was just writing down. I came up with $6,651,745, which I think is really close to what we were awarded.
Yeah, we're going to get how much?
Is it 6.7, I think?
Yeah, 6.7.
Yeah, 6.7.
So that's what we are recommending as far as our ARPA-funded projects.
Judy got a different number.
I just did a running total on what you gave.
Okay.
Yeah, so did I, but that's fine.
Okay.
Yeah, I got some points.
Okay. That's what I've got, so.
I'm sorry, what did you get? Yep.
And it...
That's 22, sorry.
It's 9:30 in the morning. Let's calm down with the numbers here.
I was going to say, Judy, you're off a little bit.
Yes.
Public Works Director and I are -- we worked up estimates independently on the Roberts Mill Road project, and our estimates are about $1 million apart. So we really need to refine that, and I think the issue is that we've been kind of tweaking this project every couple of weeks, you know, as we've done a little bit more research on it as far as like where the manholes are, what the worst sections are. So we've kind of had a moving target on that, and I think we have probably used different linear footages for some of the components. And we tried to hammer it out yesterday, and we just couldn't -- we just couldn't come up with a final figure on that one, and that's the biggest, most expensive project. So that's really what we're going to be focusing on this coming week, and we'll try to drill down that number. Basically, we're just going to go back to square one with our, you know, linear foot pricing and work through it together to come up with a final number. We just weren't able to get through it yesterday to feel comfortable with that number for today.
Okay. Real quick, was... Real quick, was your number just ARPA, or did you include those restricted funds as well?
I got 2 million for the restricted funds.
Okay, just making sure.
Yeah, I just re-added. I missed 40,000. It's, I've got 7,692,325.
So, Jim, if I might ask, a slightly related note to this, you mentioned that for some of these proposed projects, we had right-of-axe easements, right? So, in projects where we do not have the right-of-axe or the easement to it, is there a way, or do you think it's necessary that we find a way to obtain easements for future potential issues with these properties?
So, the Riffles Lane, Fairview Avenue, storm drain is, I want to say, it's the exception to the rule, but to be honest, things that were built, you know, who knows? I don't know how old the homes on Fairview Avenue are, you know, probably turn of the last century, you know, early 1900s for some of them, maybe older for some. I don't know in the older section of town that we necessarily have recorded easements on everything in the older section of town. Currently, the process now, as new roads are constructed, you know, I'll use Meadow Brook or Meads Crossing as an example, once the project is finished, that infrastructure gets deeded to the city. Along with that, there are easement plaits and deeds of easements that Jay reviews, and they get recorded in the land records and everything. So, to not have that in place is unusual, especially for a more modern project, but parts of the city go back, you know, 150 years or more. So, in those older parts of the city, it could be questionable, but most of these projects are areas that we know we have easements or rights of way, so that shouldn't be an issue for the vast majority of them.
So, I mean, so taking from that point, though, is there a way to obtain an easement, retroactively, I guess is the best way to put it?
There is.
For the future, that way we don't have to go through the process of easements if there's like an emergency or something.
Yes, and that is some part of our intent with this Riffles Lane project, is to ultimately, beyond getting the right of entry to go in and survey and start to do work, we do want to get a perpetual utility easement as well. And that'll be, we can do that, but it does take the property owner's cooperation. I mean, there are probably more extreme options that historically the city has not really wanted to pursue anything that wasn't cooperative with the property owner.
Right. Thank you very much, Jim.
So, Jim, you discussed at the beginning some other possibilities. I know Kevin and I spoke yesterday of some options for alternative energy at the wastewater treatment plant, which, for information of the council, that is our, obviously, highest use of electricity, I think to the tune of about $12,000 a month. We spend electricity at the wastewater treatment plant. They should turn off some lights, indeed. They're like kids down there. They just, they turn them all on, and they're scared of the dark. I know he had mentioned some discussions with others. Are you, you have any suggestions or options in your head regarding that?
We buy our energy, I guess, I'm not sure quite how to say it, in a block. We're part of a, it's a...
The co-op.
Right, a co-op. It's a CQI. They are able to come out and give us like a preliminary evaluation on solar, and we would like to move forward with that. We just need to get an agreement in place with them for them to come out and do that evaluation.
My understanding is that they believe there's enough space that they could, that solar could power the plant itself.
Where would we put the panels?
Well, that's part of the survey that they need to do.
Because driving through Union Bridge now, like, those solar panels are so obnoxious. They're just, you drive through this nice old city, and then you come out of town, and there's like rows and rows and rows and rows and rows and rows of solar panels right on the main road.
Right, well, fortunately, this is back Whipper Will Drive, so it's not going to be as visible.
That's why I'm asking, because I, yeah, I would hate to just destroy any of the aesthetics of the city.
Well, of course. Right, and that's part of the reason we declined the initial solar opportunity that was provided to us, that, and it just sounded terrible.
And the cost, the cost.
And there's options for this one. We initially discussed doing wind energy down there. After some discussions with local electrician who has wind on his farm, he said, "You don't get the bang for the buck for that." But imagining, take the monthly, times the yearly, we're looking at almost $150,000 in electricity just for that one part. And I think being able to reduce that figure would go a long way for our utility budget. So, I think it's something we should consider. I know there is a price involved in them coming out to kind of do the survey and come up with everything, and Kevin just wants to make sure that the council would be on board with getting that information and making a decision. Now, as to what the cost is going to be for the project, we wouldn't know until that comes back. This is an opportunity to explore something like that, to help reduce some of the costs in the utility side.
And Judy, I think we will be looking at a combination of freestanding and rooftop out there.
Okay, good.
So, Jim, if I might, could you, I guess, kind of walk me through the whole process for these projects? I mean, is it, is it with every project that we embark on, we're going to have to apply for it individually? Is it overall part of a budget? Is it, I mean, is it something that we have to wait for approval to begin?
No, we already have the first, I think that's tranche of money, the first half, so we've already been awarded 3....
3.8.
Thank you. So, that basically is already available to us, and as I mentioned during the presentation, the reporting details are still being locked in. I think it's really going to be more a matter of just reporting on everything that we do. And the responsibility for ensuring that it qualifies, so having participated in a number of webinars and Q and A on the matter, it's very difficult to get a firm answer from anyone at the state level, or the state has hired a consulting firm, Hagerty, to assist everyone through this ARPA process, and it's very hard to get a clear yes-no answer from anyone. It usually comes down to, well, check your state revolving fund, you know, eligibility. And we are fortunate in a way that we've been applying for that Roberts Mill Road project for as long as we have, because that's the program we've been applying to. And we have been, you know, in certain years, awarded components of it, never all three at once, but, and actually, this past year, we were eligible for low-interest financing through MDE for one of the components. I think it was for the water line this time. And, you know, when the ARPA funds became available, we decided, rather than take a loan out even at a low interest rate, if we have the cash to be able to pay for it, has been our, the direction we've been heading for several years now, is to try to build up our reserves to be able to do these projects without, you know, doing a bond issue or taking a loan out. So, we opted to go ahead and use the ARPA funds rather than the MDE revolving loan fund.
And so, is it, so when we have those funds, I mean, do we have to amend our budget to reflect them? Because I know you're talking about reporting and the audit, obviously, for projects over 750,000, I think, was the figure?
Yes.
So, we would have to amend our budget to reflect what we've spent?
Right, so in the upcoming budget year, there are going to be a number of these projects, so...
It's not current year, but...
For some, right, for some, for the Roberts Mill Road, we were going to split it out so that the engineering was in one year and then construction the next, because we did just award that proposal to CDM Smith to do the final engineering for Roberts Mill Road and Broad Street. So, we have a firm number for the engineering there, and we know the construction is not going to start until the next fiscal year. So, when we do present the capital improvement program, yeah, that's one project that's going to be split across multiple years, with the engineering one year, construction the next. Most of the others, we're just lumping the whole thing in one year, because there shouldn't be the same level of engineering, but I don't want to minimize that potential either. So, we probably will be seeing more proposals from CDM Smith for some of these projects as we go forward. A lot of that's going to be driven by the cleaning and televising that we're doing. So, for lining projects, it'll just be kind of a project scope that we put out to bid. You know, should not be detailed engineering for every, you know, linear foot of sewer that's involved. We just need to make a determination of what can be lined versus replaced, and there's going to be, have an evaluation of how many lateral lines go off of there and what the best approach is there. So, there is going to be some engineering cost associated with it, but not to the extent of rebuilding a street and all the infrastructure like we have with Roberts Mill and Broad.
Thank you very much, Jim.
So, back to the reporting and your questions. Jim mentioned it's still kind of fuzzy right now. The general consensus, you know, during the Q and As and webinars is, you really can't over-report. Keep every single document, every single penny, and report everything. What's unique about this, and one reason that us and other municipalities want to make sure that we're doing it right, is that the federal government actually agreed to give this money directly to municipalities, you know. Now, ours went through the state just as a pass-through. The feds gave it to the state and said, "You need to give this much money to these people." And that's thanks to the efforts of the National League of Cities and municipal leagues across the country who fought for that ability. So, we kind of have a little something on the line there. We want to continue to be respected by the federal government enough to get these funds directly, as opposed to having the state manage it. At the same time, we have a tremendous responsibility to report it correctly, and there's always that risk, however miniscule, that they're going to look at the reports and say, "Yeah, that whole project wasn't covered, you owe us that money," which would be a terrifying thought, which is why we have people like Barry and Jim, who are going to make sure that it's to the penny and everything's reported, so, which is why they've gone through all these webinars and get all the answers questioned, all the questions answered. It's a unique program, for sure.
And I guess that was kind of why I was not confused, but surprised, maybe is the best way of putting it, that we didn't have to upfront, say, "These are our plans, this is what we want to do, and we need approval for it." So, it's in retrospect that they want everything to be, basically justify what we've spent.
Yes, and if you can think about the magnitude of this whole ARPA funding area, if we had to obtain approval for each project, somebody's got to review that, right, and grant that approval. So, that increases the burden on either state or federal government that much more. So, it's much easier for them to say, "You need to make sure it fits all these things," and then they kind of put that responsibility on us, which, as the mayor was just indicating, you know, it basically puts that liability on us to make sure we're following all the rules. And again, you know, it's been very challenging to get a simple yes-no answer on a lot of things, and I think that harkens back to that basic principle, that, you know, they're not going to be the gatekeeper on it. You know, they're giving, they're delegating that to us, but ultimately, we're responsible.
It's, I'm imagining when it comes down to the end of it and everyone submits their reporting for it, it's going to be kind of like income taxes. They're going to pull a page out of a pile and say, "All right, we're going to audit this one." I mean, in Maryland alone, there's 157 municipalities that received ARPA funding, along with all the counties as well. I mean, that alone is a staggering amount of review that's going to have to happen. It's going to be rather cherry-picked, they're just going to kind of randomly pull them and audit those. You just want to make sure that you're above-board when they review yours if they happen to pick it out of the pile. There's a lot of municipalities and counties that receive this funding. They're not going to have somebody reviewing every single one. That would just be years of reviewing they would be doing. Other questions? Go ahead.
I was going to say, and one of the things in all these webinars we've sat through, one of the things that has not wavered is that the water and sewer projects are always like the biggest piece of what they're saying, "Oh, and you can do this, and you can do this," so...
Right.
That kind of, you know, you might spend it on this, but it was very clear we could spend it on water and sewer.
Right, and it seems like that's probably the easiest one to get in there. It has the least amount of restrictions, which is fortunate, because that's our biggest problem in the city right now in terms of infrastructure.
And we're not the only ones.
We are not the only ones, that is very true.
A lot of municipalities are spending the money that way.
Questions, comments, concerns? I'm appreciating the conversation, so keep it going.
No.
No.
Something I'd be interested in, in terms of like discussing this with the public, so to speak, is coming up with a figure to show how much this would save us in expenditure in the long run.
And that's a number that we can guess on right now?
I think that'd be fine.
Right. It's based on the results of recent I and I improvements, you know, we can provide some sort of estimate on our benefit from the Roberts Mill Road renovation. As to how that comes down to dollars is a whole other issue. What it really comes down to is keeping us out of MDE's crosshairs.
Right.
Is there a figure that could be attached?
There is. We might need to spend a little money to get that, but that actually is a part of our funding applications that we complete for the Department of the Environment, for example, using that Roberts Mill Road project. Again, part of those applications to the state are to essentially show the payback period, you know, "By spending this money now, we're saving this much a year in costs at the treatment plant for treating I and I." So, there actually is a way to go through and kind of quantify that and come up with a dollar figure that we use to help justify the funding applications on other projects. We don't need to do that for ARPA, but we do have, there is a way to do that, and I think that, to your point, that would be very helpful to say, be able to say to the citizens, you know, "We're spending this much money, but here's how much we're going to save, you know, year after year as a result."
Right.
Because I think the optics of the city getting federal money, well, why aren't they spending it on this, this, or this? Why are they spending it on water and sewer? And just being able to say, "Well, look, if we spend it on water and sewer, this is how much we save, and this is how much we can use what we save towards those things or other things." And so, I think it'd be helpful to put a dollar amount on that.
And that actually, to kind of bring it full circle, comes back around to water and sewer user rates. So, by spending this money there and reducing our, you know, annual expenses as a result, we're going to be able to maintain the rates we have longer before we have to get to a point, you know, eventually of talking about changing that.
And let's also remember the amount in reserves that we're not spending because of getting ARPA. I mean, it's, in one way, we're saving $6 million, because we're not taking that out of our reserves now, and that's what we've been saving up for, for these capital projects. Fortunately, that money doesn't have to go that way. So, it puts us in a far better position, short-term and long-term. But I see what you're saying, and, I mean, to have to spend money to show people how much money we're saving seems like a little counterintuitive, but may well have to determine what that figure needs to reflect and if it's worth the squeeze to get that.
And I think in the Tonton Record, the periodical that goes out to the community, the excellent little explanations about where the money goes, a part of that could be not just how we're using it on water, sewer, and stormwater, but also a broader education to the public about what exactly ARPA is. Like, there's a separate bucket for education, there's a separate bucket for healthcare, there's a separate bucket for small business support, and then there's a bucket for what we're using, which is infrastructure. And I know on Facebook, for example, that's where some of the comments were, like, "Why in the heck are they doing that?" But it's a bucket that's separate from all the others, so educate on ARPA and then explain what we're doing. And then we could also share that on Facebook and other social media to hopefully reach people.
Seems ripe for a town hall meeting. It really does. It's, that may need to happen. I think that's a good point, just being able to show what the long-term benefit of this is. If we can figure out what it would take to get that number, we can kind of go from If we can figure out what it would take to get that number, we can kind of go from there.
And, you know, best case, we can just get CDM Smith's methodology.
Right.
And then plug numbers for each project into that formula or that method. So I don't expect that we will have to spend a lot of money to do it.
Right.
There is some effort involved, certainly.
Right. And aside from that, there's the benefit of not having manholes surcharging with sewage during strong rain events. I mean, that's, I think we'd all like to see that avoided, not just from the city's standpoint, from residents. I think they would like to stop seeing that as well. Other questions, comments, concerns? Anything else to add from staff? Okay. So the intention at this point is that these are going to be in the CIP, the Capital Improvement Program, and then we'll simply approve them at that point if we so.
Right. And a number will also be in next year's budget.
In next year's budget.
As we move forward with that process, yes.
Right. Okay. Which our first budget workshop is coming up February 23rd. Yes. Thank you, Judy. Keep that enthusiasm going today.
I'm excited.
I am, too. I mean, this is what you've been waiting a year for, Barry. This is why we pay you for the budget workshops. Everyone satisfied? All right, we're going to take a 10-minute recess before we begin our next topic. So everyone can take a break, get up and stretch, get some doughnuts and coffee.
You can. Thank you very much.
All right, welcome back. Our next order of business after that short commercial break is the Community Village Ordinance. To give a brief overview to anyone watching, Community Village is an optional type of development that we offer as a zoning that gives developers the ability to have higher density with certain limitations and also provides the city an opportunity to dictate elevations of houses and things of that nature. It's a little bit unique. Over the past couple of years, I think we've noticed certain issues with the ordinance as it's written, along with issues with our zoning map not displaying what is Community Village within the city, which I think we find could be an important aspect. So I think the first thing I want to do is kind of get a presentation from staff regarding Community Village, and then we'll start discussing what amendments we believe may need to be applied. Once this discussion is complete, and we have our list of things we'd like to see amended, we're going to send this to our planning commission for them to discuss, determine what they see is appropriate or not, and then it'll come back to us as an actual ordinance to amend. Is that the correct sequence, Mr. Weprick?
Good summary, yes.
Excellent. With that, I'll hand it over to staff to give us an overview.
All right, good morning, Mr. Mayor, Council. It's awesome sitting over here and seeing you guys have such a great time on a Saturday morning. Appreciate the opportunity. So, Community Village, first of all, what has to be remembered is that you all can approve that or ask, you all can approve it or not before it even, you know, make it the option or not. Then it would go to the planning commission, who would look at it as well. More importantly, it's an application process. They just can't come in and go, here you go, because it can be looked at and resubmitted with changes that we want or need. Community Village, in the past, we have Carol Vista is one example, and of course Meads. And Meads from 2008 to 2016 changed dramatically, a number of reasons. The recession of 2009, and then, you know, hey, that costs too much, we're going to cut this out, we're going to eliminate the alleys, that type of thing. Well, and later I'd love to hear from Councilman Hand what that may mean now that you have all these months in your new home. So, but, Community Village, really, it's like Mayor said, it's a concentration of homes, different types of homes, and the controlling of open space. In the Soul Farm situation, one of the neat aspects that we can't mess up is the view of the mountains. That's a nice, that's a nice start right there. And then, orienting things so that there's a common central area. Clubhouses are a big draw to these communities, and the amenities they bring with them, sports, tennis courts, so on and so forth. The other thing we have to keep in mind is parking. When you have townhouses, or just different types of houses, you know, there's a requirement of three parking spots off-street. Even with Meads, in reading this document, the townhouses have a, as a, for instance, have a garage, that's one spot, and then only one spot in front of it, with the exception of the end groups, which have a second spot outside, so they'd actually have three spots. And the driveways, it's interesting that you're only allowed to have one parking spot in front of the dwelling, okay? So the rest of the spots have to be either inside or to the side. And really, Jim and I have put together a number of pictures, two slides to show you of what is good and bad, what are the options, in many cases, and it's really neat options out there, which we'll see in just a little bit, with cars, and just even the townhouses and how they can be. The nice thing is, we've made the townhouses, the townhouses out there have to be staggered, see, on that big block of, you know, vinyl. Decks, decks aren't like they used to be. One of the views, we're going to see wooden decks on the end of these, the actual houses that came in originally with Meads, the townhouses had a wooden deck, and in a decade's time, who does a wooden deck? You don't see that much for new construction. It's normally the tracks and the PVC, that type of thing. So Jim, so there's, there's the first version of Meads. Couple changes to the right inside of the picture, you see, whatever the age of where you see a nice little pond scenario, it's pretty, that's, of course, not there. And you see the alleys behind the townhouses, and they're gone. Alleys, myself, I like alleys, there's trashcans, that's a huge thing in our city right now with a lot of homes we have that are multi-family construction. How do you get the trashcans when it's wet out, when it's muddy up, from the rear of the building to the front? Alleys sort of make that scenario away, and it is a huge deal. I get calls monthly about, you know, hey, you know, this trashcan, you know, so and so keeps their trashcan out front. It's not very nicely, it's not very nice to look at, and then you have the other component of trashcans being a problem, the smell. You know, a lot of calls over summertime about, you know, trashcans having unpleasant odor. You notice that, Jim, we were talking about the buffer in there, is that, is that the second?
That's the, we're back to the original now.
Can we go to the latest version? So there's, there's a more accurate version of Meads, that's what's out there right now. And not beating up on Meads, it's just a relevant example to talk about. There's a lot, a lot of good with it as well. And again, you have the desk housing, you have different types of housing. You have the townhomes, and you have the mix of ranchers and two-story homes. The premier lots that most of these communities have, they're typically a larger lot, and larger square footage home. This is, this is the area out by Havelaw. This was proposed with the council.
Many years.
Many years ago. And the restaurant's still on that, on that development, and this isn't like a dead issue, I don't believe, but these are quadplexes, triplexes, for the most part, and there is a requirement for all community villages that, certain types of housing, there has to be a mix.
And this one also shows kind of that concentration of the open space along the stream course there, too.
And, again, another example, a lot of houses there, a lot of different types of houses, in clusters, again, with the control, strict control, and additional controlling of the green space.
Just a quick addition on this one, you'll notice some of the, some of the areas do have, like, rear service areas or alleys, other portions don't, so this one's kind of a hybrid of the two approaches, but again, you can see that it sort of concentrates the open space and clusters the development, you know, away from that open space.
So, the homes in the yellow are the premier homes that they'd like to put into these villages, and they're nicely spaced out, they're not just clustered in one corner or another. Okay, so here's some elevation shots of, again, the original Meads drawings, the architecture and styles have changed since then. It's amazing how a decade, only a decade is what's needed to make a development look incredibly different.
And I'm just going to add there, with Community Village, we do have some say over what the houses look like. With a conventional subdivision, all that we would see is basically a footprint of where a dwelling could be located, and where the driveway access is going to be, so that we know what, what street address, for example, for a corner lot, which street to assign to that particular lot. With Community Village, we have the ability to accept building details and building design. So, whereas with a conventional subdivision, as long as you meet the minimum square footage of the dwelling type that's going to go there, it can look like basically anything. That's not to say that developers don't come in and say, you know, here's the house that we want to put there, but that often changes. With Community Village, we can lock in that particular design and say, okay, it has to have this, it has to have a brick water table, it has to have, you know, brick unexposed foundation rather than concrete, we can get in that level of detail if we want to, and that's part of the Community Village aesthetic that we don't control with a regular subdivision.
So the elevations that you see in front of you, Council, if we can go back to that real quick, these were based on what's referred to as rear-loaded lots. The alleys are behind the houses. When they park at their house, they pull in from the back, it makes for a different visual in the front, you know, it's, you're just looking at essentially a house, you don't have the garage doors in the front, you don't have driveways, all of that's in the back. So what you see there, there are driveways, or, excuse me, garages on each of those, but you would park in them from the rear. Continue, thank you.
This is very typical town, a townhome, there's parking in the front of these. We have some pictures that you're seeing a little bit of, for instance, this, this group of townhomes, the parking is in the rear of the property. Looks, the rendering, looks very nice and clean, you know, it's just, you know.
So this one's just an example of rear-loaded garage townhomes. This particular community is about 20 minutes away. Let's see, I believe this one is Market Square, just on the outskirts, it may be in Frederick proper, but it's right off Route 26.
Right.
So you can see to the right-hand side there, looking up the alleyway at all the garage doors, but on the left-hand side, that's what the, you know, that's the facade presented to the public on the main street. And just another example from the same community, the townhomes face more of an open space And this is another elevation, this is, again, back to the original Meads Crossing proposal. This is, you know, it's not the, kind of more line drawing, but gives an idea of what, what type of the aesthetic that the townhouses were originally proposed to, to meet. This one's another kind of shot of the, the rear of the rear-loaded townhomes, again, Market Square and Frederick. You know, the rear is not particularly attractive, but it does give you an area for the utilities, place for your, you know, the trash truck to go through, and, you know, rather than putting your trashcans out front once a week. And again, you know, kind of preserving that, by consolidating that, you know, the service portion to the rear, you get a nicer-looking view from the public street.
But you lose her backyard.
Yes.
Right.
In this particular example, yes. Okay.
Now, this is rather fascinating, the picture, the home on the left-hand side, that is a townhome turned sideways, it's got a name, what is it, Jim?
Side-loaded.
There you go. So, pretty neat. The structure on the right-hand side is the garage, that a lot of these places are going to standalone garages to the rear of the lot, takes care of storage. In the case of Meads, when, when the sheds were asked to be brought back into the picture, part of Community Village is, the planning of the home must allow for storage, so that's the angle when it comes to, you know, why can't we have a shed, from the original aspect, it's because the store is supposed to be accounted for in the construction of the home.
And this photo's in here really because, admittedly, you know, this is obviously a, a rather expensive community and a rather expensive approach to a townhouse, but it does demonstrate Community Village principles with that rear-loaded garage. This one still has a backyard, albeit compromised probably by the garage, but, again, this is an approach where some thought has really gone into the view from the public street. So the, you know, the parking is off the alleys, and there's really been some thought about the, you know, the, the view of the elevations, not just from the front of the homes, but from the side, for this example. And more just showing kind of the more utilitarian end of it. This is not the exact same strip of townhomes, but, but again, townhomes with rear, rear parking served by alleys, rear garages, just that, that would be more of the Community Village aesthetic. This one is just more your typical front-loaded, single-family house or front-loaded garage, single-family dwellings, and that's more of what we see typically throughout town, and that's very similar to, these aren't the final Meads Crossing designs, but they're closer to what we ended up with at, at Meads Crossing when they switched from those images we saw earlier to the front-loaded.
Well, and they went more from a Victorian style to a craftsman-style elevation with this.
And just some more examples of your, you know, more typical front-loaded homes. So, again, not a bad-looking house by any means, but just a different aesthetic from having the, you know, with having that garage door and the, and the cars in the driveway be what you see from the public street, the public view. This one, again, just, there's, where the metal roof building kind of in the center of the slide is, there's a large open space, and then the townhomes all kind of surround in front that open space. This one there obviously is parking on the street, but the homes are still served by, by rear parking. Just another idea, you know, you see there's no obvious driveways here, and again, the homes front that large open space, kind of the village green concept, and, and again, that's sort of a community design aesthetic. Just another example of what an end-unit townhouse could look like, where you pay particular emphasis to the design and what it looks like from the public view. And this one, you can kind of see there is a garage attached by that brick wall with the arch, and here's another view of that same townhome from the, kind of the rear two-thirds look, and this one obviously has the detached garage. Again, the service area for some of those rear-loaded garages, so it gives you an area where you've got the utility kind of, you know, out of sight of the main public thoroughfare. Just another view from that same community, you know, some of the, there's a side-loaded townhome on the left side of the slide, and again, they kind of face that open space area.
And the houses are surrounding the, the open space, it doesn't, it tries to make it a focal point for each community.
And just, Daryl mentioned trashcans. Here's just, you know, something that's unusual in a residential area, at least for, for our little world here, is having essentially what looks like it could be a dumpster enclosure, but in there are individual trashcans for the nearby residents, so it gives a consolidated point to pick up, pick up refuse.
At that point, why not just do a dumpster?
And that, right, and that could be something that if the HOA were to, you know, provide that service for the residents, that certainly would be an option. And just another, you know, view of, of keeping that kind of open space that the homes front. And those were just really some examples we wanted to put before you to kind of get, get some ideas flowing, see what kind of design considerations could be part of a Community Village. Jim, is this, is this Community Village at night?
Is what?
Sorry about that, yeah. Should have put the, you know, the end one on there, you know, theme.
Prefer more lighting in our Community Village.
It's a dark, you know, certified dark sky lighting.
That's right. Thank you, Joe.
Before we even start, can I make a comment?
Please do.
I just want to kind of go back to reminding ourselves that Community Village was kind of created by Carol Vista to serve a purpose for their builders. So while the idea of it is, is good, I don't like the idea of making it a set of standards that has to be biblically followed. Like, I think it should be a document that can be worked with and used as a bargaining tool, or as a, as a means to an end. I don't think every development should be a cookie cutter, I think that we should look at individual developments as its own, its own creation, because you don't want every single development in your city to look exactly the same.
Right.
That being said, you know, I'm sure the alleyways look great, but I think it depends on how they're, they're used. I've done a lot of work in Montgomery County, and I've done a lot of work in other counties that do that a lot, and those, sometimes those alleyways really do start to look really awful, because people like to pretend that nobody can see them, you know, and when they are out of sight, out of mind, that works in a city that maybe has a lot of policing or the people are always using it, but we're kind of a different kind of town, so if we create areas where kids can get back there and do stuff without being seen, that in itself might create some issues.
Well, and I think that's, that's part of my issue with the rear-loaded lots for the alleys, is first off, you're essentially doubling the amount of pavement that we have to plow.
I'm hearing that the impervious versus pervious surface areas, too.
Right, and you're, you're doubling the amount of space that police have to patrol. And can you go back to the slide that has all of the garages in the alley, right there? Imagine plowing that, it's...
Well, and not only that, but we used to, when we would be working, there was no parking up front for work trucks.
Right.
So you would have to park in the back, and those trucks are fairly large, they would end up blocking the road, and you would have people out there hooting and hollering because they couldn't get their truck past it, you know, to go up the, the alley to get to where they needed to be. So I just think that every individual situation needs to be looked at on its own merits, and where it is.
I agree. I think what I'm hoping to do is to get us a good starting point of what we would like to see, and still have the flexibility that we allow, but I just want to make sure that the way it reads now is something that if someone took it word-for-word, we would be okay seeing in Tawny Town. And I don't know that word-for-word, this is something that's going to fit in aesthetically with the city, or is going to create bigger problems like with these alleys that we don't want to see.
I just don't want to get too specific.
Correct.
And to, Judy, to your comments about the, the alleyways and such, and maintenance issues, certainly a lot of that is going to come down to, as, as you mentioned, you know, the jurisdictions' ability to do code enforcement, but largely also whether or not there is a strong homeowners association in place. That has been something here in Tawny Town that has been problematic.
It's almost like an ebb and flow, you know, sometimes they get real, and then other times it's like, eh.
Yes, yes. And, and in years gone by, I don't think that those associations had the level of funding requirements and so on that are necessary in today's world. funding requirements and so on that are necessary in today's world. So, you know, as those of you who have been around town a long time are aware, you know, one of the earlier townhome communities was governed by a homeowners' association and there were, you know, areas of open space and everything that that association was supposed to maintain. And that didn't work out and the city stepped in and, you know, it's been kind of a mess ever since as far as those open space areas.
Right.
But with a, with a strong homeowners' association, which is a component of community village, I mean, that is a mandate in community village that, that there be an association that maintains these open spaces. You know, that would be less problematic, certainly. Other issues that might go on in those, you know, less visible public areas certainly could be problematic. So, but something I want to jump back to is that initial slide from, let's see if I can, well, I'm just gonna whip through here real quick. But trying to go back to that original Meads, you'll see that not everything has an alley. So even with this, there was some flexibility that the planning commission already has as part of the ordinance, where not all of these, not all of the homes would have been served by alleys. So there were areas in there, for example, the lots that are on the perimeter of the project, where you would only serve, you know, one home rather than two from the alleys. They weren't required there. So, you know, even within the ordinance as, as written, there is some flexibility on the alleys. And that, that seems to be a point of, the biggest point of contention, I think, with the community village is the, the whole alley requirement. And even within the city, you know, there are differing opinions at the staff level. You know, I don't get in a truck and push snow in the winter. So I have a different perspective than the guys who are out there with people trying to flag them down because they just pushed snow in front of somebody's apron or whatever it may be, or, you know, dodging parked cars in a cul-de-sac. You know, so they have a different point of view than I do. And I will admit that since I've been acting and then city manager, I've come to appreciate more the headache that DPW has with pushing snow. My stance previously had been more, it happens 10 times a year. You know, why are we designing around what happens 10 times a year? But when you see the, the result of like how big a deal it is when you're pushing snow and how many people call and complain and, you know, you just can't do it right. You know, you put down too much salt. You didn't put down enough salt because, you know, I can't drive, like the roads are just wet.
Right.
You know, I mean, it's, it's just, I never would have imagined how big an issue it really is, at least here.
Come on, you had Facebook, you should've known.
So, well, okay, this is pre-Facebook, but yes. So, you know, again, the alleys certainly are a big, big question. And, you know, it is more impervious, which means more stormwater.
Right.
But again, you know, depending upon the model that the community follows, and I'll use Carol Vista as an example, they have relatively narrow streets compared to the city standard. They do have the front-loaded garages, you know, they were granted an exception back in the day to do that. And the argument there was that that demographic perceived alleys and rear-loaded garages as being a, a safety concern. You know, alleys being, you know, a dark alley and people lurking, that, that kind of a thing. So, you know, that, there was some logic to that and that was the demographic that they were after. So it was like, this isn't going to work for us. One thing that is notable about Carol Vista though, is very few, while they aren't individual lots, they're condominium stages, very few of those dwellings actually back up directly to another dwelling. There's some level of open space between almost all of the homes out there as far as the rear yards. So it looks very compact and tight from the street, but when you're looking out from the home or you're behind the home, there's open space there. And, you know, it's, it's, there's some good design there that really gave a lot of thought to that open space and, you know, the ability for everybody to access that open space. So another thing, getting back to, you know, kind of like DPW, Public Works Concerns and things like that with the alleys, in Carol Vista, the city doesn't maintain the streets. The city doesn't maintain the stormwater facilities. So, you know, they've engineered stormwater to accommodate their paved footprint and their rooftops and everything, and they maintain that on their own. So in some examples, having the alleys may not be the concern for the city that it might be in another community.
Right.
So, you know, again, you know, I think, but getting back to your comments, you know, the one-size-fits-all approach, you know, is really not the best.
Right, right. And that's, I just want to make sure we don't look at it that way. Because I feel like when it does come up, they're like, well, that doesn't meet community village standards. That doesn't meet community village standards. Well, I think that's okay sometimes to have some changes as needed. And that's, yeah, that's just the only point I'm making.
Right. I think, in thinking them through, I'm gonna make two points here. First off, with Meads specifically, when the alleys went away, what I believe was not fixed adequately were then the width of the streets. In my opinion, Meads has extremely narrow streets, especially when they have cars parked on them like they do now. You, you struggle to get two cars passing each other when they park on one side or the other. In fact, it even came up when they made the connection to Meadowbrook. There's, is their street narrower there, Crimson?
Yes, Crimson.
Crimson narrows when it enters Meads Crossing.
As you come into Meads Crossing.
Right. When you imagine certain townhomes, imagine a stick of townhomes. Can you go to the next slide?
The next slide?
Nope. Go back, go back. It's the closest to the current Meads, right there. There you go.
I'm sorry.
If you look at a townhouse in the middle of a stick, if it is on fire, getting hoses to the rear of that townhouse could be troublesome for a fire department, I think.
Well...
Well, you have to wrap around other places.
You've probably got one parked.
I should hope. What I'm saying is, is it creating obstacles at that point? So, I mean, there is a benefit to rear-loaded lots in that aspect. Of course, if it's packed with detached garages, you're not helping yourself at all. So, I mean, that's, that's a part of planning that needs to be considered is the public safety aspect. How easy is it for apparatus to get to and service that property?
So if I might, Mr. Mayor, I want to take a step back. So at one of our previous meetings, I'd pointed out how I'd gone through the community village ordinance. And in there, the only things that I could find that were not open to modification or change, absolutely prohibited, were swimming pools and up until a couple of months ago, sheds.
Right.
Right? So, given that everything within a community village, the community village ordinance is open to modification, and given what Councilwoman Fuller said about wanting each of these developments to be distinct, I'm going to ask the overarching metaphysical question here. Why do we have community village standards at all? Why is it not that with every single residential development that comes in, we're looking at it and we're saying, based on where this is, we want it to meet certain standards? Based on where this is, we want it to meet certain standards? And then have like a uniform set of requirements that all developments have to adhere to regardless? Because again, it seems to me that, that if we are literally opening up just about everything to modification, and if each development is going to be distinct in and of itself, then why do we have a community village ordinance at all whatsoever?
Well, if I could just, the one thing that I do like about community village is the requirement for the open space and the design standards that the planning commission gets a say on what the overall aesthetics is. I feel like we'd still need to give our developers choices to, in order to draw them here and to want to build.
Can you pull your mic towards you? Thank you.
But so I guess, and I'm not disagreeing with any of that, right? But I guess the, the question is, because I mean, even that is open to modification within this. So if, again, that being the case, why do we have to have a community village designation at all? Why isn't it that any development that comes in, we say, has to meet these core requirements? And then there are some tangential, tangentially related items that we can discuss that may be open to modification?
Let me field that for you. We do. So, forget community village because it didn't exist and since the 2000s, it's been around. We have subdivision regulations and zoning, and those two dictate what the developments would be like. So any development that you, wasn't thrown up on the screen, if you go through them, they look the same. Yeah, they're cookie cutter, some of them the streets curve, some of them they're not, the lots are uniform. That's based on what you're saying, a set of rules for each development that's going to apply. The zoning dictates the density, how many they can put together. The setbacks are dictated. And we've gotten more sophisticated to try to make sure that the setbacks fit the neighborhood, depending on where it is. Like if it's downtown, we have an extra set of rules. So, that exists. And what happened in the early 2000s is they wanted an opportunity to make modifications, to negotiate, to say, well, we'd like to have more density, but we'll give you more open space. We'd like to have narrower streets because it'll keep traffic speeds down. And the way to do that, since you couldn't do it across the board because of the units already laid out, they said, well, we'll have a community village designation. And the council, when they adopted that, they said, we don't want this to happen everywhere because it'll be a free-for-all. Every developer will want to do everything. So we're going to dictate, meaning you, are going to dictate which properties get the community village designation, which is what Darrell was saying. They apply, they tell you why they want it, and you say, yes, you can have the designation, which said another way is, you can have the ability to start modifying things. And then the planning commission and the developer start modifying things. Because when you say, when you went in here, there aren't a lot of standards of what you have to do. It's, we'd like to see your concept. It's almost like we're putting the burden on the other side, saying, send us what you want to see. And a lot of what we are disappointed in is they show us a thing of what we want to see, and these projects are massive, so they take years to do, and then things change. And it's not like they're violating community village, it's they changed from the expectation they set on us. Carol Vista never did that. Okay? They laid it all out. We had the same expectation at the start and in the end, and that's why it kind of looks the same. But Meads Crossing, our latest example, they did. I mean, but you got to remember, they started designing stuff in 2008 and they're still building now. So it's the length of the project. So I hope that helps. I mean, if you look at it from a developer's standpoint, they've looked at it as we can have a density bonus. That's what drives them, okay? They can get more units. That drives them. And in return for the more units, they have to do stuff that we want, which they have to put up with. Well, we're not happy with this, can you redesign it? We're not happy with this, can you redesign it? And they're happy to do that because they get more lots.
So, but to that point then, from the obverse of this, is the problem not that there are too many requirements or we want things to be specific, but we need to lessen what can be modified? That we need to be more stringent about what we anticipate and expect versus what actually gets built?
That could be something you'd need to, if you set like their guardrails, like you can't go beyond that. The swimming pools are an example, okay? The sheds were an example too, but we said that guardrail's going to be moved, which we always can do. You know, the alleys are an interesting proposition because they're not called for in there, they're called for because of the way the other things are required. If you're going to have a rear-loaded garage and rear parking, how are you going to get there? It gives you an option. You could have a use-in-common driveway. You could have all the streets, as Jim said, be private. And that's not our problem. If you want them private and narrow and everything, as long as it meets fire safety, you go do your, do your thing like that. So, you know, to get back to your point of saying, well, you know, are there absolutes that we don't want to have? You could do that. But you're taking away the authority of the planning commission, in some cases, to negotiate. And the alley situation, you know, it, I said this story before, but it bears repeating, is, is comical in the sense that if you look at the history with Meads Crossing, they proposed alleys and the city staff really fought it. I mean, I remember there were pictures of what it would like if there's, you know, we don't want alleys, we don't want alleys. And in the end, they wanted alleys and we said, well, in order to really serve the places, you're going to have them. So the planning commission said, okay, you know, you can have alleys. Then it sat for a while and then they came back in and said, we need to redesign this. It's not going to work. This neoclassical's not going to work. We need to take out the alleys. And then the city staff was, we want the alleys that we fought against, you know, a few years. We got to have these alleys. And at the end of the day, it was like, well, the alleys aren't going to work and so on and so forth. So you see what I'm saying is, if you want flexibility, the way it's written is right. If you don't, then you should start putting more standards on it so, so the planning commission can't alter it. I personally don't think it is a developer's thing. You know what they're going to do. They're going to design things to benefit them, a product they can sell for the amount of money that they can turn. You know that.
Right, right.
So it's not saying we're going to hold the developers to it. It's almost you want to hold the planning commission from making certain changes that you might not want to see. And you do that all the time with all your other ordinances. You say, enforce these ordinances this way. So you're on the right track. If you feel there's too much flexibility, then you need to take the flexibility out.
And I guess, and part of my, I guess part of my, I don't say confusion, but my, my being perplexed about this is that, yes, I get that there are going to be higher densities for community villages. And I guess, yes, that they're going to be, but again, it goes back to those standards of what, you know, makes up the, the core of the village. It's because if everything is open to interpretation, if everything is open to modification outside of the density, at the very end of the day, what are we left without? Swimming pools.
Well, I mean, like when you say density, it comes down to numbers sometimes, but when you actually think about, community village requires different housing types. Okay? A nor, normal housing development doesn't. You know, you can have all houses, all townhouses. Here, they have to be split. Well, imagine where you say, I'm going to make the community be walkable, I'm going to make it all walkable, but you don't have a dense community, so they're on quarter-acre lots where you're, it's like a runway to get to the next thing. The idea is if you're going to create a city, mini-city environment, you have to put more houses in it to make that. And that's the give and take that you're going to have to work with.
Gotcha.
Do you recall why ultimately the alleys were, were not going to work?
So, Meads Crossing is kind of a response to the economic environment of the time. So they, they got to the point of approval with the original plan, with the alleys, the rear-loaded everything, right before the housing bubble burst. So at that point, they could not find a builder interested. You know, we went from, from building, at that point, things were already pretty slow for us, but we went from doing maybe one or two houses a month to one or two houses a year. You know, the Creekside subdivision had been approved and the roads had been built and they put up barricades at either end of the community because they couldn't build. Nobody, you know, nobody was building or buying houses. And that's just when Meads Crossing had gotten their approval. So, again, you know, as, as Darrell said, you know, community village is something that the developer asks for. They don't have to build that way. So they asked to build it that way. They were happy with the alleys and as Jay said, staff-wise, yep, there was some argument and it was usually between, you know, Public Works who has to push the snow and get trucks in there. And there was a lot of concern about fire safety and modeling the radiuses on the turn so the fire truck can get in there. And it, there was a lot of time spent on alleys and street widths. At the time also, and I think, and I'm not trying to pick on Meads, I think it, you know, it has ended up being, and there's a lot of nice stuff about Meads. I think it's, it's a nice community. Hopefully it will stay that way for many years. You know, there are things I really do like about Meads Crossing. But as far as the process, you know, it was very much a response to the economic conditions coupled with the city's desire for growth. So because we were not willing to, the specter, I guess, we were dealing with was if we didn't give some concessions, that the project would not move forward. And the city was very focused on wanting growth at that point. So, F was given direction, make it happen. So the alleys went away. Now, in an ideal world, when the alleys went away, and now we have front-loaded driveways and we have cars backing out onto those narrow streets, in a perfect world, we would have reevaluated the street widths. That didn't happen because we were again, under that fear that if we didn't let the developer do what they said they needed to do, which was get rid of the alleys and not re-engineer the rest of the project, that we would have a dead project. And the city was very hungry for residential growth at that point. So, so Meads is kind of a... So Meads is kind of a product of a bunch of circumstances. And then as that evolution continued, we utilized the Development Rights and Responsibilities Agreement to override the community village, what restrictions were there, and much of the design aesthetic in order to make sure that Meads built because we were hungry for the development. I can't put it all on the developer's plate. We wanted it to happen as a city. So we made those concessions. And we used whatever vehicles we could because we really wanted that project to happen as a city. So, you know, it's a combination of things. So, you know, we, the builder came in, you know, we want to build this. The housing bubble burst. That was no longer viable. We really wanted it to happen, so we let them, you know, chip away at the project over time. So.
And, you know, and don't get me wrong, I'm not opposed to degrees of flexibility because I understand different circumstances and situations determine certain things, right? But again, I guess I just keep coming back to that point that if just about everything is open to modification outside of things like, and even I think at some point, the unit density itself can be modified. Somewhere in here talks about that. So I guess it's less, to me, this is less of an ordinance than it is like a set of, we were saying earlier, generally applicable guidelines, you know. It's, and I guess to that point, then, my question is, why don't we just apply this general sense of thinking to all residential developments that come into the city? That if you're a developer and you come in and, I mean, is it that we want the developer to know that this is a possibility? That's part of what it is?
It's a carrot and not necessarily stick, but it's an incentive program that it's only good on certain zoning bases. Okay, like, so you have to have a certain base density, a certain R category for it to apply to. And then it's like, you can get more if you work with us to get the things we want. Remember, this is the things we want. We want the open space. We want the walkability. We want those things. So you can get that. The one reason why it wouldn't apply, I mean, it could apply everywhere. We can make it work. These are very time-intensive. They take a lot of effort on our part because everything has to be negotiated or worked out or checked. Whereas like we talked about Creekside. Creekside is a traditional development. Okay, it predates all of us. It was already approved. But it went through the process. It got approved. The engineer said, yeah, the lots are all laid out right, and that was it. And we never really had much dealings with them. They just went and they built houses then. Carroll Vista, this was the first one, that kind of worked the same way because the ordinance was written for them, okay, back in the day. But there were still things that came up. You know, decks on the back of the houses. How do you handle that when they encroach into easement areas that the city has pipes in? The width between the houses doesn't fit the code because you don't know whether you're supposed to count the eaves or the projections for the air conditioners or the chimneys and things like that. And I remember we had that big discussion, and it was the question of, well, as long as a fire truck could get through there, it's okay. Even the heights, it was, is the height level, when they were going to build them, they were going to build a tall one, and they didn't. Height level to the eaves, to the peak, to the top of the living space. And then remember the fire truck, where could they stage so that they get their ladder up there? All these things, even though the ordinance was written for that development, came up after the fact because you can't think of every possibility. And so you're always going to be negotiating out.
In my, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Lee.
Now, going back to earlier, so in my mind, getting rid of the alleys possibly created more space for more homes? But I could be totally flawed. Is there a net, like, the proposal, how many homes there would be versus the post, all the changes?
With Meads, we did end up with more homes than I think were in the original plan. But it was not directly a result of the loss of the alleys. For the most part, when they took the alleys away, the lots just got that much bigger, for the most part. They did modify some other areas. They adjusted some lot size. And they, you know, in response to what the developer they were courting at the time was looking at, you know, they wanted to be able to do a certain number of lots because the builder that they, that had interest, you know, had certain standards. They, you know, they wanted to be able to do X number of these units and so on. And so the developer kind of responded to that and reworked a few things. But overall, the alleys didn't directly correlate to an increase in density.
So, and I'm just trying to understand. So I know that there were lots of factors, and you went through a lot of factors of getting rid of that. So ultimately, is it because, given the downturn in the economy and the bubble, that the alley, the asphalt, the drainage, the infrastructure would have cost more? That's why it was, that's why it was desirable to not include it by the developers?
I can't imagine those were not factors. Developers, you would imagine, is not really going to give us their business model, you know. But the way it was presented to us was essentially that they could not find a builder interested in doing that product.
Okay, yeah, I'm just curious why. I just don't know why.
Yeah. And getting back to one of Joe's points about, you know, why do this rather than have the, you know, flexibility? I think, you know, community village gives us not just the ability to put something other than a single-family detached dwelling in a certain district. It gives us that additional control over what it's going to look like. So, you know, when it comes to the density bonus, for example, you know, if they are providing certain amenities, or they're going to provide a house type or, you know, some detail that sets the community apart from others, that may earn them a density bonus. And the slide that I backed up to, again, that townhome that looks more like a single-family home from the end, you know, this would be an example. So if your townhouse is going to look like this, we will let you do X number and have this ratio of townhouse versus single-family house. And there still would be limits within community village. But community village does, you know, give that ability to put a townhouse, say, in R10,000. But the planning commission could say, you know, if you're going to give us the townhouse that's on red tulip court, you're only going to get this many, or you can only put this many together here, or whatever it may be. It gives a little more subjective authority, I suppose, based on the amenities or based on what's being proposed.
So basically, based on where it would go, we're effectively using community village, in a sense, to override what would otherwise be normal development standards?
Right, it does, it does, right, it does add some flexibility along with its own set of standards, yes.
So then, let me ask the second metaphysical question here. Almost you'd call it ontological, maybe. So given everything being open to modification, being that we desire the degree of flexibility, being the degree that the consensus seems to be that, you know, community village standards are important to have, you know, today, what is it specifically about the ordinance that we have now that's wrong that needs to be corrected? That's, I guess, my other root question of all of this.
Well, I think that's what we've been waiting for you guys to tell us. And I think, Joe.
And the reason why, I mean, you know, it's humorous, absolutely, but also seriously. It's, if, again, we sit up here, and let's just say for the sake of argument that we say that all community village developments from now on must have alleys behind them, it seems like we just circle back to the same initial issue. A developer comes in and says, well, for reasons X, Y, and Z, we can't do alleys. And then why would we sit up here and say, well, we're going to constrict requirements for alleys in the first place?
Right.
I mean, do we need to touch this at all?
And I think it comes down largely to an aesthetic. You know, that the alley is in the rear-loaded, you know, result in a different look from the public view. And that's a big part of, you know, that and the preservation of open space and, you know, preserving views and things like that are kind of the major precepts of community village. So there are other ways that you can get density. You know, there are other ways that you can allow a variety of housing types. And, Joe, you mentioned about flexibility and, you know, why can't we, you know, why couldn't a developer do this or that? You know, that makes me think of what's known as form-based zoning, where you look at, you kind of start with a look at, from the public perspective, what's the impact of the development going to be? And, you know, based on that impact, that kind of drives the design. We have what's called Euclidean zoning, which is a separation of uses. So we say, you know, single-family homes can go here. And then in this district, you can have single-family homes and semi-detached and townhomes. And in this district, you can have businesses within these constraints. So we separate things based on the use and somewhat on the impact as well. So it's just a different approach to zoning. And it's, the approach we use is the approach that most jurisdictions have done. The form-based idea is something that's evolved, you know, probably over the last generation. I know there was kind of a movement towards it in a lot of communities. And then there's been some pushback as to, oh, look, here's why it didn't work. So, but that is a different approach to zoning. And it's, it would be, you know, a major overhaul of how we do things. But I think a lot of also requiring that, as Jay said, you know, since there's an application process and the mayor and council are kind of the gatekeepers on parcels that are eligible for community zone, community village, you know, that stops us from having, you know, quadruplexes or triplexes or townhomes in every R10,000 subdivision. You know, it's a matter of where does it make sense to have them? Where do we want that density? If you want that density to be available anywhere, you could simply amend the district regulations to modify that or rezone different parts of the city to a zoning designation that allows the different types of houses. You know, but that would allow you to have that density, but it doesn't allow you to have any control. Because typically, zoning is about, you know, distances, area, bulk, you know, lot sizes, that sort of thing. You know, it's not about how it looks. And that's kind of the key with the community villages. You know, you give us something that's really nice, that's like above and beyond what we would get otherwise, and we'll let you build this many more of them. So it's really kind of a give and take.
So if I understand everything that's been said, when developers want to build, let's say in Towne Towne, there are a few options of how they might want to go about it. Community village designation is just one choice by which developers can go after. So why not have it be a choice? And let's go ahead and put some parameters on. Like what Jay said, it's what we want, and then it's guidance for the planning commission. So sure, let's say, community village, clubhouse, walking paths, and a two-way alley. Why not do that if it's not mandatory? Developers can choose not to request and apply for a community village designation. But if they choose to enter that and then have that ability to have flexibility, yet there are some fundamental truths that would be a part of it, I don't see why we would not pursue that. Because once again, it's an option. It's not like we're saying everybody has to cross this threshold and go through this process. Yet it would give us the ability to have some aesthetic guidelines that we could hold the developer to.
Right. So what sparked this conversation is the city now has two developments that were built under community village. Is the city happy with how both turned out? Are there changes that we want to see after those, considering we have, Mountain Brook Farms has already been approved for community village, correct?
Correct.
Right, which is not revocable.
Theirs is not.
Correct. Right. And then, based on what you saw from the annexation agreement with Sewell's, they intend to apply for community village. So.
Havela Village, where the, most recently, Easy Does It Bar and Grill. The property just to the east of that is within city limits. And the developer is doing some engineering work on that. And that was also intended to be a, I believe, an age-restricted community village.
Which I believe Sewell's is looking at the same concept.
I think Sewell's has backed off from the age-restricted. So that's a conversation for another day. But yes, the original, when they originally approached the city for annexation, and we counsel-directed staff to go ahead and explore that, the presentation at that time was that it was going to follow the Carroll Vista model. So privately-owned infrastructure and so on.
So the Havela is, how large is that?
I believe that was going to be limited to 50 units when that was annexed.
I mean acreage-wise, because community village only applies to, what, 10 acres and more? Right.
10 acres and more, yeah.
Is that 10 acres out there?
I think.
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
And at the time, the developer owned the parcel where the restaurant is as well. So those two parcels came in together with, and the concept plan wasn't referenced in the annexation agreement. So they aren't obligated to that specific concept. That was actually one that was up here.
Right.
So that was this one. Okay, why am I not? Oh, come on.
Hit your play button at the top there.
But I don't think they have designation, right? We just anticipated it, but I didn't think they made application for it because we didn't get the five-year waiver on that.
Right, that's.
Right, I mean, that's.
Yeah, they, they're right, there were a lot of complications with that one. But at the time, the city was requiring developers to, well, part of this annexation agreement was that the developer would provide the recharge acreage on the water supply side. And I think that was part of the idea of restricting the number of units because he actually purchased an additional property, developed a water recharge easement on that property that was enough to cover recharge for the 50, and again, this is from my memory from a long time ago, but the 50 retirement dwellings. And that, I think, also recognized the lower consumption for a retirement dwelling than a typical single-family house. So that, again, you know, a product of its time.
Now, this is not a mix of dwelling types. These appear to all be, well, we would refer to as townhomes.
I think they are, there's, I think, what typically folks call a duplex. We call a semi-detached and some quadruplex homes. It looks like there may be, and there are little notations that are probably too small to see on that slide, but there's little notations on each of those proposed buildings about how many dwellings are in there. And it looks like the most is four. So that would be.
There's a five, right.
There's a five, okay.
That's more like Carroll Vista.
Okay, yeah.
Because that came in after Carroll Vista, using Carroll Vista as the model. But Mountain Brook definitely has it, and Sewell's won it. But these people haven't talked to us about it. But when they designed it and got annexed, that was in their intention, but that's some time ago.
Okay, I guess my point is, looking at this, if this came to us today, is this possible under community village? Since I don't see the mix of dwelling types that community village calls out specifically.
You're right, Mr. Mayor. There's an amount of how many types of dwellings there can be.
Right.
And, you know, the threes and the fours, if you will. I'm just trying to find that.
There is some flexibility when it comes to retirement dwellings, though. So that, and with that being the age-restricted, I think that was the, I don't want to use the term loophole, but I think that was the code section that they used to do the.
Right, retirement.
What is the rationale that singles that out? Is there one? Just curiosity is all this is.
I would imagine that if you're targeting a very limited demographic, you know, it may be more practical to offer one type of product.
Right.
And I think also.
I'm just curious if the developer wants to come in and say, well, I don't want to do a retirement area, but I want to do all townhomes. I mean, what justification is there that they can't?
That is specifically called out in the ordinance.
Right. And I guess my question is why?
Right.
Why is it okay for X but not for Y?
I think because it is already a loosening of the restrictions of the dwelling types that can be built in a certain district. So without community village in, say, R10,000, the only dwelling you can do is a single-family home by right. Actually, I don't even think there's a special exception for anything else in R10. So with community village, it's, okay, you can build different types of houses, but. but considering in R 10, typically it's only single families, you can only have this percentage be something other than single families. I, I don't know if there is like a, I don't know what drove the percentages. It was probably just through the discussion group. We did have kind of a, a task force that worked up this community village ordinance. It was done with a, a group of folks, including members of the planning commission. I think there was probably a council person involved. And again, this goes back to the late 90s when Carol Vista was under consideration. And the developer approached the city saying, you know, we would like to do this, but your code doesn't allow that. So, and that's what started that whole exploration and development of the community village was the idea of an age-targeted community or age-restricted community. So, but getting back to the nuances of that ratio, I don't know why we settled on those particular numbers. But I think we can limit it because, again, without community village, you couldn't do any.
Does it give us the flexibility? Well, it gives us a lot of flexibility, so maybe this question doesn't have a point. But with a retirement village of sorts, we can always say, no, you can't do all townhomes. Is that correct? Or by right, are they able to do all townhomes?
If you read, it's on page four.
Page four.
And it's, I mean, you're talking about the mixes, subsection seven, and it gets down, you gotta, I mean, you gotta sit down and read it every word. If you go back, the example I'll use is Carol Vista. If you just read this, Carol Vista doesn't make, they're, they're all. They're all quads, they're all duplex, I mean, they're, they're not a mix, right?
But they are, they are a mix.
Well, they're all the same type. There's no single-family houses, are there?
Yeah.
Yes, there are.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I guess what I'm getting at is that's not the best example, but.
Well, that's the thing, none of our community villages are best examples.
Well, when you look at it as retirement, okay, there's no definition, retirement, right? But we're saying retirement is 55 and older because that's the age-restricted. That's how Carol Vista was played out. It's age-restricted community 55 and older. When you start calculating the mixed density there, they don't include those. So you can see that in C, it says where attached multi-mans are included, not including the retirement dwellings. So if you look up here at the Bean property, and he says that's all age-restricted, they're all retirement dwellings.
Right.
So you see, okay, there's a loophole. There's something there, okay, well, we didn't think of that. But if you're having all retirement dwellings, do you really want to have other types of things? Do you want townhouses in there? I mean, that, that's the point. If you, if you require a mix, you're requiring them to put that. And we say, us, look at them, okay? Let's take them.
Right.
They like townhouses, okay? They are maxed out on the townhouse to the max they can get. And then the rest, they fill in with the other things because the townhouse is the best bang for the buck.
Right.
Well, I kind of thought the point of community village was that you could stay there. You started in a townhouse and you could shift to another type of house and, you know, move up or down as needed. But to me, at this point, they don't really need to.
We're listening to Ed Gold's Lifetime.
Well, that was, that was Mead's concept. And the retirement village concept is not that, because by the time you're there, you're done moving.
Right, and that's what I'm saying, like.
Mead's approached it from.
If it's a retirement, that that would be us, you know, a certain type of dwelling, that they're certainly not going to want ones with like several floors. I wouldn't want to run up and down floors every day. Or stairs.
Right.
I get you.
Well, and, and either way, I mean, it's, it's what they're looking for. What I'm trying to figure out is, is there a true definition of community village? And it brings me back to kind of my original issue. And I, I spoke to Jim and Daryl both about this. If somebody in Mead's Crossing looks at the zoning map, as far as they know, they are R, is it R 10?
10.
R 10 in Mead's Crossing. So they look at our code for R 10,000 and believe that applies to them. It actually does not apply to them because they got all of these exceptions. And the only way that that is memorialized is through a DARA, which is not published publicly, correct?
Right, it's recorded.
It's available, it's available, right. But we go back to the shed issue, or we go to, to the swimming pool issue, okay? Which they were not allowed.
Right.
If anyone with some thought goes online and says, you know what? I want a shed, let's see what the city says. Well, I'm R 10, here's R 10, it says I can have it, I can have it. Nothing on our zoning map states additional restrictions.
And why wouldn't we just put on the zoning map?
Well, that's the question.
A little star that says community village.
We could put an overlay.
An administrative figure, even the fact that, you know, laying it on the overlay has some connotations that it was adopted as part of the zoning. But I mean, if we're just simply saying there's a map on the city webpage and say, this is not a depiction of the zoning, it's, but you could put a hashtag on there. You see what I'm saying? It's that like, when we adopt a zoning map, it's adopted and you'd have to go through a process. But you could have administratively some map on the website that says, this is your zoning and the reasons why. I don't think that's a big issue, kind of crosshatches on the ones that apply.
And then it's a matter of how do they know what truly applies? Are they then? Do we, do we summarize a DARA and have it available? This overlay is subject to this? Or is it, how would we address that as a city? And then going forward, how would we better address these things?
I would do, I would put the burden on them. Because it's just like when they have the HOAs. We don't know all the HOA rules. We tell them, come to us and say, you've met them. So you make the developer, when they're selling a house that's subject to a DARA, do a DARA disclosure. By then, the DARA is recorded, he could give it to them and say, this is the recording number of where you can get it, or he can give them a copy, whatever you want to make them do. And then the person's on notice that they have to follow that through. Because I don't think it's going to be up to us to tell every single person in town what their deal is. They need to know, they have to have the tools. I mean, right now, you're right, we don't provide them the tools, they have to figure it out.
Right, and that's great for first owners of houses. You know, as, as it continues, that's going to change. And we have issues like with Mead's where the information provided to the homebuyers was not correct.
Maybe it should be part of the HOA docs. I mean, not part of them, but you can see what I'm saying. That every time you sell a house where there's an HOA, it's part of the contract that you have to provide them with the documents. In the Maryland contract, it says you have to do that, they have to get it. So maybe you make it a responsibility of the HOA that you must also provide as part of your documents, the DARAs that apply to this. You're never going to make it easy because this wasn't created.
To be easy, right.
This was kind of cobbled together through the process and again, it up here. So somebody's, you know, it's, I see your point. How would you know?
Well, while I think that is a desirable attempt to provide that for the residents, I kind of have to agree with Jay as far as, you know, putting it on them to be responsible to find the information. Because just in, in general terms, even within the zoning code, you know, if you want to say, okay, I can see my, I'm here on the map, so I'm R 10,000. You know, if I'm going to do some digging, I'm going to find the code, I'm going to look at R 10,000. Well, great, that gives me the basics. But maybe what I want to do has to do with the minimum square footage of dwellings. Well, that's not under R 10,000. Maybe I want to do something else that's not there within the district reg. So you kind of have to flip back and forth through different articles within the chapter to get the whole picture. And I think that's very difficult for someone who doesn't deal with it day in, day out to, to know. You know, there are a lot of nuances of, of learning and interpreting the code that, that have to mesh together. And, and I think it's, it would be wonderful if, you know, there was like a one-stop point where you could go to and see everything that applies for your property. I mean, as a homeowner, I would love that.
Right.
You know, but it would be a tremendous undertaking because there are so many, so many elements of the code and building code and everything, even, even just within the city code. So many different sections and, you know, tidbits that, that all merge together, you know, on one property, that it would just be a.
But don't we provide that?
But then.
Don't you do that?
I mean, that, that's why people call in and we, we try to, you know, we try to inform them and educate them on all those different components. So, you know, we've, we have people who are, you know, who want to do, you know, they're looking at a vacant lot in the R 10,000 district. And, you know, can I do this, can I do that? And it's up to Daryl, or previously myself, to say, well, you know, here's what you need to look at. And then we tell them also, you know, now this is just the city code aspect. You know, in addition to this, you'll want to, you know, either work with a design professional or talk with the county permits and inspections bureau to find out from a building code perspective, you know, the implications there as well. So, you know, we, we do try to educate people and, you know, point them in the right direction for things that are, you know, beyond the city code, but that we know they also need to consider. But, you know, I, I understand we have more and more people who are going online, looking at the code, and then calling, you know? And, and, you know, in recent years, we see that as being, I would say we probably have as many, if not more, people who have done some basic research before they call. And that's helpful.
Right.
You know, but then there are things that, you know, they're not going to go, they're not going to know to go look at supplementary, supplementary district regulations about parking, or about driveways, or about square footage and, and things like that. And that's where, where we come in as being the ones who deal with the code day in, day out to, to help educate them. So I, I, you know, and again, I love the idea of there being like, you know, someplace where you can just go pull it up. I mean, I, I'm, you know, even, even being a baby boomer, I go online and I try to figure stuff out first, and then I'll call somebody if I need more information or I'm not sure. But, you know, even I go online and, you know, try to figure it out and see if I can do something online first.
My thought was more towards the things that, that are impulse buys for people. Sheds and pools, which of course sheds are becoming less of an issue anymore for it. But their ability to simply go online and, and say, you know, I want a pool. It says I'm here, I can have pools here. That's that, whereas in reality, that's not reflective of.
Except for that the community village all have HOAs, which they would have to go through them anyway.
You would think, right.
So that would be on the HOA to be like, yaho, you got it, then no, no.
So here's the challenge with, with this. I spoke to the company that is the HOA right now for Mead's. And she told me that they're getting incredible feedback on the enforcement, that they're, the rules. So I saw two trailers out there. We don't own the place yet, so that's on them. But you can't have a trailer anywhere on any street in Towne Towne. At Mead's, you can't own a trailer. You have to keep, keep it in your garage. So they're not, they're not allowed on the streets, Mead's. They don't have the big community parking lot that was, that most of these places have. That's where trailers and commercial vehicles and jet skis and all the other things that make us feel young again. But not really. So, so there are going to be challenges. And then, you know, going down the road, I mean, some people, you know, like fences, we see it all the time, a fence pops up magically out of the ground. And you can't do that there, you know, like a corner lot. Corner lots are different in that you can't have a six-foot fence. Whereas in other areas of town, you can have them. You're not supposed to have parallel fences in Mead's, as you were in Meadowbrook, or almost anywhere. And guess what? There's parallel fences, so there's a gap like this. So we're always saying, you know, have you checked with your HOA? Creekside has an HOA. I didn't know that. But they, and they have a very good one. The thing about HOAs, there are companies that, that exist that do HOA enforcement.
Right.
And they have the ability to levy fines like in Mead's. And Mead's has a very aggressive, well, well-organized system. And that will be there until they form a, a committee like at Carol Vista.
Well, and it seems like in the beginning, you have to, because that's when all of those things happen. All those new fences and, and new decks and, and everything like that, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know.
So the fences, I get fence permits weekly electronically. So I get people who want to build a home. They go to the county first. Well, you can't do that, shouldn't do that, they, they do that. So with the electronic permits, yeah, they're already set in motion. A lot of this comes from the fence company. And stuff's already rolling, you know? So again, Mead's, Mead's is very different in that they will, they're very up on things and they're doing a lot of education with the people because people are claiming they, I didn't see that, didn't know that. Here's another thing. You can't have a pool in Mead's, okay? You also can't have a home occupation. That's huge, if you think about that. You know, we've had three in the last, we've had a pet grooming home occupation, which got granted, not Mead's.
Oh, okay, I was like, really?
Now, we have another daycare that's coming in, and that's in Meadow, yeah, it's Meadowbrook.
Okay.
And, you know, that's home occupation. So home occupations in, in a community village are not allowed.
So, and I've heard this broader discussion come up elsewhere regarding home occupation. At what point is it defined as home occupation? There are people who work from home.
Right.
Is that home occupation?
I was just going to ask that question.
Is it when you have customers come to your home?
So there's, there's two levels of home occupation. The, the, the most basic one, we use Joe, for example, who works from his home, as being a home occupation customary and incidental. So it's, it's that kind of use where, you know, you have a home office, you take calls, you work on your computer, but you don't have customers coming and going. You don't have box trucks coming, you know, any more than anybody else's, anyone else's house.
Right.
You know, as a result of that business activity. A home occupation special, those are the ones that go to the board of appeals. And those are the ones where you have some, some outward impact of the business activity. So a family daycare where you've got five families coming and going, dropping off children every day. You have an employee who doesn't live there, who comes every day and has to park someplace. You know, anything that's beyond having just the resident, who's also the business owner, doing the activity. So, you know, people coming and going. It doesn't allow for like any kind of retail sales out of a development, you know, out of a residential district. But basically, any, anything that's going to have an outward impact, you know, customers, merchandise, you know, anything like that crosses that line to be the special exception part.
Right, which we're seeing more of that take place.
Now.
Right, and outside of the city's knowledge or approval.
Right.
Because you have your, I don't know how to refer to them other than, I want to just call them pyramid schemes, but they're not. But the, the consultant things, you know, your pampered chefs, your things like that where people have.
Right.
Almost retail set up in their house. And they have people coming, and it's.
Yeah. And that is, that can be problematic.
Right.
You know, I mean, typically, that, that type of a sales, you know, whether it's, you know, going back, you know, to back in the days of, you know, Amway and Avon, you know.
Shoot, just aged yourself.
Yeah, okay. So, okay, let's see, pampered chef, bring it, bring it forward a decade or two. You know, pampered chef, Sensi, Lou LaRoe, whatever.
All of those.
Shoot.
Is. So, you know, those things, you know, okay, I have an office in my house. I, you know, entice people to throw parties. And, you know, I have a supply of stuff that I take to the parties and, you know, show off and try to collect orders. You know? If I'm doing that, you know, by the, I guess, subscribed formula, I'm not having customers come to my house if I'm, you know, really doing it as a home occupation customary and incidental. Now, do people throw parties in their own house or have their own showroom set up? Very likely. I can't imagine that there aren't people in the city doing that sort of thing. And, you know, if that comes to our attention, that they're actually creating a small retail shop, then we need to step in and say, hey, you know, you can't do this. Here's what you can do, and here's the process you need to go through to do it. But does it happen? I, you know, I'm sure that there are people doing that. I can't imagine there aren't.
So going back to community village.
But you wouldn't do that in a community village, hopefully.
Right, hopefully, that's the. You, you talked about trailers, and that's one thing specifically laid out in here is having the central storage yard facilities. So I assume that was excused for Mead's. So, I assume that was excused for Meads Crossing, that they didn't have to do that.
So, basically, community village, if they're going to allow boats, trailers, campers, you know, things like that, to be within the community village, they need to provide a central storage area for them. Because the idea of individual storage on individual lots or condo stages is prohibited, or used to be. So, with both of the existing community villages, with Carol Vista, they said, you know, quite simply, "We're not going to allow it." Well, both of them said, "We're not going to allow those things to be stored on site." So, that is an option. The central storage facility is only required if they're going to allow those things to be stored within the community village. So, both Carol Vista and Meads said, "We're just not going to allow them." And then that, you know, didn't give them the obligation.
And why would they allow it?
Right, because...
Because that takes away from their ability to build more houses.
Right. And I'm sure the business model, you know, for the HOA and everything going forward, they would probably rent spaces, you know, to park your camper or your boat trailer. But, you know, it's another, like, an enterprise fund sort of thing they would have to set up.
Right.
So, right, why would they? And in the case of Carol Vista, there, while Carol Vista was still being built out, there is a storage facility proposed and under development right next door, which turned into a bit of a debacle, but...
Right.
You know, all's well that ends well, I guess. But, you know, had they played their cards a little better with the storage facility, you know, they had, you know, 400 dwellings worth of customers right next door, you know, for, you know, RV parking, boat parking, whatever, that wasn't allowed within Carol Vista.
Right.
You know, so it could have been a win-win. Unfortunately, the storage developer had some missteps and didn't work out that way, but...
Right.
Yeah, but it is an option, so...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So, I guess, is the idealistic goal here to strengthen this ordinance to the point where the city is removed from the circumstance of having to constantly grant exceptions?
No, this isn't really...
Because it doesn't seem like, once a development has been granted, community village, it doesn't seem like there's much of an incentive or deterrent for them to stay true to what they agreed to. Because, kind of to Joe's point, if we add more restrictions or we add more design standards, there isn't really anything that's going to keep a developer from coming back and say, "Well, we'd like to do this instead. We'd like to amend this. We'd like to amend that." So, is the goal of the conversation instead to just specify the designs we'd like to see and go from there?
Not necessarily. The goal of the conversation is to make sure we're comfortable with what is there, make any changes that we think need to be, because we know that it's coming up on the horizon.
Gotcha.
We all need to be well-versed in this as it's coming up, and make sure we're comfortable with where it's going and where it's been. If we are, that's great. Then we all have a very in-depth understanding of community village that I don't think we had prior to. And we know going forward, things to look out for in this, that we just want to make sure we adhere to, and that we relay to the planning commission, going forward, let's make sure we adhere to this, 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 and not fall into these same traps again. I think there are parts of community villages in the city that we may not be 100% happy with. And maybe it's just a matter of maybe not changing this, making it more clear to planning commission or ourselves, when it comes to us, that we want to be more strict on this.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay. I expect we're going to be seeing a lot of discussion on community village coming up with developments on the horizon. I want us to be prepared for that. I think everyone's gotten a reasonably good education today. Is that fair to say?
Yes.
What other questions do we have? What other concerns do we have? Not even concerns, just general...
General query, maybe. So, if we did decide to amend parts of this...
Mm-hmm.
Is, I mean, obviously, once we grant permission for such a development to begin, right, at what is the latest stage that we can alter the ordinance to have it be applicable to the development? Does it have to be beforehand, before anything begins? Or is it something that we can change partway?
They would be subject to the development, to the regulations in place at the time they entered the process.
So, in other words, if we would probably want to do this sooner rather than later, before everything gets underway?
If we wanted to do it, now, keep in mind, Mountain Brook Farms is subject to what's in front of you. Now, does that include the shed thing?
Well, they do not have a valid plan in front of us right now. There was a concept submitted many years ago that may have been approved, but any approval of that would have long since expired. So, I think it would be subject to when they submit their concept plan.
Their next plan.
And for the duration of that, you know, time period. If they, you know, if somebody gets a concept approval, and then we have another, you know, recession or housing demand plummets and it sits, those approvals may expire.
Okay.
And then they would be subject to whatever's in place the next time they come back.
Yeah, I don't think they're, like, Mountain Brook Farms, use that as an example. They don't get the benefit of what's in the book right now. They get the benefit of what's in the book when they come in with their plan.
Okay.
And to put, I mean, there's a fairness and there's a legality. If people are designing their plan for, like, example, soles, and this is what the rules are, and then you change the rules right before they're approved, that's not very fair. It's legal, but it's not very fair. But they will memorialize everything once their plans are approved through a DARA.
Right.
And that locks them in later.
Which the DARA is open to amending until what point?
Ever.
They finish.
I mean, until it expires. But one of the key aspects is for them to say, "At the time of this, you will not institute any new regulatory things that will apply to us, unless they're applied across the board."
Okay. So, the DARA is an ever-changing document?
It could be. I mean, they could always come in and say, "We want to change it for this, that, whatever."
Mid-construction, they can come in, and that's essentially what we did regarding sheds for Meads, correct?
But the base documents, like, all the things the planning commission approves, they become irrelevant when it's built, right? Because it doesn't matter. The roads or the street whiffs are the street whiffs.
Right.
So, once those things get approved, they're pretty much done.
And because we haven't changed anything with the current community village, sheds are still a no unless, because our previous discussion, that was for another amendment to the DARA for Meads, true?
Correct.
Okay.
So, any new community village that comes to us by default cannot have sheds?
Right.
Unless we...
Agreed to it with a DARA.
Right.
Don't do it.
Correct.
And so, I guess, to whoever, I think it was Joe that asked about the time period. I mean, to be realistic, you know the soles are on the track for annexation, the hearing's in April, you may have adopted it as soon as May. And then they'll be wanting to get their community village design together, and they're going to have to submit a concept. And so, if you want things different, you probably need to get that in there if you're going to create hard, I'm making this up, you're going to say, "Must have alleys." If it must have alleys, they probably need to know that before the concept is drawn up. So, you're looking at sometime this summer that, you know, otherwise, they'll be waiting, or you'll be telling them, "You can go ahead," but at your own risk, and who wants to do that, so...
But even then, though, if we say, "Must have alleys," that still can be modified at a later date, can't it?
I think we've proven that we can modify literally anything.
Right.
Even when it says no, we modify it.
And that goes back to the heart of the original point that I made, is then, you know, what is the point of this? What is the...
Well, I mean, the whole point, to look at it from the perspective of the applicant, you don't have much guidance. They have to guess what you want, basically. So, they come in with this idea, saying, "This is what we'll do for you, and if you want us to change some things, we'll do it." What they don't like to do is change things later, after they already have approval. They don't mind having us make changes, what they want. But you see, so, when I say, it's like, "What's the point?" If you want alleys, they'll try to design it with the alleys. Because you said, "I want them." But then if they find out, "I really can't do it," then they're going to ask for the exception.
I'm glad you brought that up, because as Diane mentioned this, and I'm just thinking about this now, I almost feel like even the process by how we go about this needs to be altered. Rather than this being, you know, "Apply to us, and we'll do some back and forth," I almost feel like it needs to be a working partnership in concert, so that, you know, listen to the discussion today, right? We talked about density, we talked about the unit type, the unit mix, the open public space percentages, and that are complementary of the residential density, and of course, the HOA. So, if we almost, we could almost minimize this ordinance to say that the development characteristics are going to be determined based on the conditions, the situation, standards, regulations, that kind of thing, so that every developer that comes in that says, "Yes, I want..." Because again, if the key is unit density, that's what it all boils down to at the very, very end of this, right? Then if I'm a developer, and I come in and I say, "Yes, I want community village, tell me what I have to do to get it," then at that point, that's when the planning commission, whoever, steps in and says, "Well, we will work with you to make this beneficial for everybody," right? So, that way, it's not, you know, three years into the development, suddenly there are no more alleys or something. This is all something that gets, almost like a work group session at the very beginning. You know, I mean, I know that there are meetings...
That's the way it happens, and it has happened.
It does happen.
They called it the stakeholder group, and...
Right, but...
The problem is, is that we don't want to design somebody's project.
And we don't have the resources to hold their hand to that point.
Even if we did, right?
Right.
But we don't want, I mean, it's your land, it's your project, you know what you think you can sell into the market, but we're going to regulate that because we have to live with it. But we don't want to be the one that designs their stuff.
Right.
Well, the point of this is to have a starting point.
Right.
I mean, otherwise, it's just like, "I'm going to build stuff."
And I'm in agreement with that, but then even at the end of the day, though, right? But even to that point, though, at the end of the day, we are still venturing into aesthetics. We still are venturing into design, you know?
Yeah, but they know that coming into it, because we've got this.
Well, but then they would, but then they would...
You give us what you've got, but this is what we're going to be looking at, once you bring it to us.
Again, I'm not in disagreement with that.
No, I know.
The way that we are, the way that we're saying it, maybe, because again, if, again, if we use as simply as, I mean, you can see how much I've marked this up, right? But if we use as simply as a base standard, right? But then, at the end of the day, nothing really applies.
That's very rare, though. Like, that would be like when you're writing a book, if we said we wanted a book about this, instead of us coming over and saying, "Mm, I don't like that name. Uh, I don't like that character. No, I don't want it to happen there." You write it, or give us an outline, and then we can say, "Okay, this looks great," or we can say, "Well, what about this? Can you change this?" Or, I don't know, do you know what I mean?
Well, that happens all the time with my workers.
It really worked out the way you're saying...
Description. It's a job description. As a CEO of a company, if I have five departments, they're going to do five different things. So, if we have five different options for housing, we're going to have five different items that they can choose from. So, they already have something on the table. Like, I wouldn't hire somebody and just say, and they show up the first day, "What am I going to do?" And so then I have...
What are you telling me?
And so, boom, here's the job description for, and this is what you're going to be interviewed for, and this is the job that you're going to get, if it goes your way.
Well, and Lee, I'm glad you brought that, I'm very glad you brought that up, because, again, when we go back to the unit type and the unit mix and the density and all of that, and we talk about what we can reasonably expect from the developer, and yes, I know that Meads Crossing was, you know, an abnormal, although we only have had, what, two community villages, you said, at this point?
Two.
Two? So, even though that is an abnormal situation, and then this goes back to what Councilman Haynes talked about earlier, too, you know, where is, again, I just feel like we're lacking a core of those requirements that have to be in place, because, again, if everything is, that's the one part I really can't get past, is that if everything is open to interpretation at the end, if everything is open to modification, then even with it being a starting point, it's like we really don't know where we will end up at the end of the day.
Duties as assigned.
Well, I mean...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. In a job description, duties as assigned, or this part of the market fell out, so we're going to modify your job.
It doesn't come out that way. I mean, it sounds, because you're not practitioners of it, I mean, your planning commission members are used to this, your staff, you start off with the concept first.
Right.
I mean, and that's one of the pitfalls we've always have, is that people have given us concepts that sell us the world, and everybody loves them, and they're not able to deliver on that, okay? So, it's almost better to have less of a concept, and everybody agrees to work towards it, and then they pick pieces as they go. And the planning commission, I mean, they meet every month, and it's almost like it's a different aspect they deal with. It's like, "Today, we're going to deal with elevations," and they came in with the housing types, and everybody looked at it, and the chairman, the groups come back and say, "We really like a little more brick," or "We really like a little more color," or, I remember, it's like, "We want the units to be offset," and stuff.
Right.
And they did those things. Now, I guess the thought would be, well, how come they couldn't have done that first, instead of having us review it? Beauty's in the eye of the beholder. You know, I mean, they came in with what they thought, and then our people who live here and have to live with this made the adjustments. And then there weren't any changes after that, until they come back and say, "Well, we need another housing type," or "We can't build this because the stone doesn't work." So, it always seems like it's getting narrower in the funnel. It's never like everything's a free-for-all. You know, I think the process, I mean, we've done two now. I think the process works, in the fact that you go into it knowing it's not hard and fast. If you need hard and fast rules, then this isn't the way to go. But if you're okay with trusting the planning commission to negotiate the way this has to happen, and their biggest problem is that they're always the ones that are going to have to say no. And saying no is a tough thing, and they've done that a couple times.
Right.
But saying no has other implications, as Jim was saying. "Well, the development's not going to happen because of what you guys decided." So, that's a lot of issues.
And also, being a small town, sometimes, I mean, it sounds like right now, from the mayor, that we have a lot of people that are interested in participating in multiple opportunities, which is wonderful. But there are some years where it's really hard to get people on board, and then you get people on board, and they're novices, and they're not a part of, you know, the history, and they don't know anything. So, I would say guidance is of the utmost importance in terms of moving forward in future.
Right.
And again, like I said earlier, I'm not opposed to that whatsoever, and even, I'm not opposed to community village either. I just, you know, again, those concerns, again, I get the guidance and everything, and I get that these are, you know, something to aim for, we'll say, right? But again, if everything really is open to interpretation, I mean, even going back to the discussion we had about the sheds, right? And I know that those were, you know, a certain set of circumstances under which we were discussing whether or not to allow the sheds, right? I guess I'm looking for something maybe a little more concrete. Again, I embrace the idea of having flexibility, I embrace the idea of being able to change things, determined, being determined by the circumstances of the situation. But again, you know, having had this entire discussion, it's, you know, if this really is the best way to go about this, then again, you know, what was the, I mean, was this just a discussion to make sure that this is where we were gonna continue, or...
More or less. I mean, it's...
I mean, it's easy to understand that, like, because of the turnover, some people don't understand that it isn't supposed to be a document with very specific expectations. You know, if you don't know what the document is for, then you do get the comments like, well, that doesn't follow community building standards, so why does it get to be a community village?
Like the shed thing, right?
Right. So, but I mean, some of those expectations are very well-laid out. You're gonna give us some open space. Like, that's gonna happen. Where you put it is up to you, or how you do it may be up to you, but that's gonna be part of it.
Well, the words there are different, because it'd be great if they would give us open space.
No, yeah, correct.
They provide open space to them.
You know, but...
I would love for us to actually get open space from these people.
You know, and the clubhouses and the pools. Like, there is gonna be some play, but...
I think the key with community village is the amount of input we have and our ability to drive the bus. The thing is, we need to be driving the bus. And oftentimes, we find ourselves being dragged along, as opposed to leading this and saying, this is what we're going by, and this is what you're doing. I know what you want, but we're telling you no.
And it's done.
Right. We need, we need to make sure we are driving that bus, that we follow this to that T, which means when we have turnover on planning commission, that they are brought up to speed.
Right.
Which I think happens quite well here. We have a chair who does a tremendous job of guiding them. I appreciate that they're here, seeing this and learning along with us, how community village works, because they are an integral part of this, and we wanna make sure that they're following our best interests as well.
All right, so then my last comment would be outside of those major thoughts on this, right? I guess, and they don't have to get discussed today, but at some point in the future, some smaller issues, or not issues, but confusions, maybe, that I came across. Like, for example, I know one of the things I'd mentioned at a previous meeting was like, how do you differentiate between a large shed and a detached garage? Because you can use a garage like a shed and not park a car in it, and then...
If we really wanted to make some...
Well, right, but I'm sure to be defined in here what that difference is.
Yeah, if we really wanted to clarify the difference between the two, that really just could be a zoning code text amendment.
Right.
You know, right now, our code just uses the term, I think, accessory buildings. Well, in some, in some areas, it says accessory buildings, other places, I think it does actually say shed. But I know my predecessor didn't really, or predecessors didn't really differentiate between the two. It's all an accessory building, according to the zoning chapter. So you can call it a garage, a carriage house, a potting shed, a she shed, a, you know, man cave, whatever. You know, it's still accessory to the dwelling. You know, whether it's got a footer and foundation, or it's on, you know, railroad ties or whatever.
Mr. Mayor, that's enough from me.
I agree. No, um... Any other comments? Are we satisfied with where it sits in front of us right now? We feel educated on what's coming down the pike?
So, educated, yes.